All right, this is 5:15, August 20th. I will call the meeting to order. Actually, we do roll call.
Lindberg.
Here.
Nippert.
Here.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger, here. Kelly.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Thank you.
We've all been given the agenda. I don't think there are any changes, subtractions, additions. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll read that motion in a second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any conflicts, state them now, or as they pop up, let us know. Moving on to the consent agenda, this is all under one motion, one roll call vote. We have the minutes of the August 6, 2024 council meeting. Claims list number 1320 in the amount of $176,501.86. There were some, anybody saw those? Any concerns, questions about any of the larger ones on there?
I would just comment that it was included in the packet that the new truck, dump truck within our street department fleet, which was budgeted and approved to be purchased. We did take delivery on that, yet it's now getting all of the equipment mounted, and that's a portion of what that total budget item was. So, but we did take receipts, we paid that amount, it was $113,000. And the other big item on there was the, another load of ap fuel, Jet 8 airport for the flying season.
Okay. And then you have the expenditure revenue reports for the month of July of 2024, and the HMU sewer landfill reconciliation report for June of '24 and July of '24, and then the sheriff's fiscal report for July of 2024. Our motion for the consent agenda.
Motion, second.
Motion by Nippert, second by Peterson.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Thank you.
And then moving on to the, under other business, we have a review, the permit for the street closing for installation of painting, the crosswalk art on four crosswalks downtown at Sixth and Court and Seventh and Market. And I think there are some folks here, if you guys have questions about any of that, or discussion about either one of those. I'm just lucky enough, it's just in my neighborhood, so looking forward to it, so.
I think it might be helpful if the Wellness Alliance or that group could provide a short overview of the request and what's taking place.
Katie, you want to give us an overview?
Hi. So I'm Katie Sanquist, I'm the board president of the Shelby County Wellness Alliance. And this is part of kind of multi-year, big picture effort, we're calling Community Canvas, knowing that public art is something that draws us together. There's a lot of research that goes behind that push, saying that when we get out, when we can connect as a community, when there are creative expression, that helps us feel more connected, and we know that connection is really crucial for our wellness. Loneliness is actually a higher risk factor for early death than smoking. So it matters that we're doing these things in our community to help people feel connected. Last year, we kicked off Community Canvas with the theater mural, and that was really exciting to kind of see the momentum build for that very first project. And we're seeing that momentum continue as we are here in year two, and expanding that connection to a partnership with Harlan Community School District. So this, just in the next couple weeks, we're hoping for September 9th, if the weather cooperates, we have four crosswalk mural designs created by high school art students. They did kind of the concept in the spring, we finalized those designs. You'll see kind of pulling up here where those are going to be. And you may have already seen, there's donation boxes around town, it's been on Facebook, the four designs that we have here. Those are just preliminary, so as students come back next week, then they're going to be working with their art teacher to finalize those, make sure that the color scheme matches the pavement paint, that we have done the research, it's going to stand up to time, and they'll finalize those designs with that new color scheme and kind of get everything up to speed. So it's been a wonderful kind of planning process with the art teachers about how to leave something that's really going to be visible and long lasting in our high school curriculum as well. Another piece of that sense of, even from a young age, people being connected in our community and feeling like they're part of something bigger. So the logistics side of that, I'm going to bring Brian up here, if you want to share a little bit about kind of how we're going to do this. So we are really minimizing the disruption to downtown, and we're maximizing how it's going to look. So we're really going to get a clean kind of finished look as we're heading into sort of the unveiling of that, kind of in the swatch places.
Anything, Jean? Okay. Hi. We've got this permit, which I think you're approving today. Was there another permit that we needed to have?
Yeah, we need to work together on the actual construction permit.
Okay, all right, cool. As of a month ago, I was really hesitant, like there were so many details that need to come into play, and I don't know if this is going to happen, it's a great idea, more public art in Harlan, more public art in Shelby County, you can't beat that, we need more of that. True. But within the last month, with Jean's help, Jean is part of our Feel Better Committee, which is Community Canvas, Katie leads us, Scott Buchanan, others, a lot of details came into play that, well, let's do this, let's do this, we'll figure this out, we can figure out the materials. Scott Buchanan is kind of leading the material list, and Do It Best has already given us a gift certificate, basically a donation of $400 toward the total amount of supplies that we'll need. So that's awesome, and I think we've raised
A thousand.
A thousand bucks so far.
Halfway there.
Yeah. The really great thing about this is it's not going to be just the four on the catty corners of the square. We want to finish the other four in the spring ideally, so we start to create an art walk around the perimeter of downtown to just encourage pedestrian traffic, keep them downtown for a little bit longer, and they'll likely spend more money, right? That's a good thing. We've got street closer permits, closure permits in play, and it was, one of the things that really coalesced the efficiency of this is Jean brought Jeff Musage to one of our meetings, and we went onsite to look at what our needs are going to be. We need an eight-foot wide white band put down first, and then one foot in will be the border, so it gives each artwork a frame. And so each artwork will be six-foot wide by however long the crosswalk is. I think the shortest one is 42, the longest is 54. And you would think that it's a square, but it's not exactly square, which is totally cool. But Jeff said, hey, we could do this all in one day. This white paint that we put down, it will be dry within an hour and a half, ready to paint. So we came to the conclusion, and he also suggested Jeff did, that a Monday morning would be the least impactful on the businesses downtown throughout the day. So we'll get the white band down, then chalk out or line out the artwork itself. Students will then paint that same day. We close all four, or we close these two corners just for one day. Initially, we had thought, well, one weekend for two, and then the next weekend for the other two. And it was really Jeff and Jean who gave us the impulse of, let's just do it all in one day. It'll adhere, the artwork will adhere better to a fresh palette of white paint and last longer. So all these details have just come together quite well, and I'm sure we will encounter other details that we will have. The art students, led by Michaela Cahoe and Kim Perogue, they're going to be initiating and doing the actual painting themselves. And Kylie, Kylie, right? Kylie Cumming. Her students are going to be videotaping and drone videoing the process as well. So that's information that could maybe go up on the city website, if you guys think that that's cool. So the other really, really awesome thing about this is that the art teachers and Kylie are starting to incorporate public art into their curriculums as a part of the educational process, which is really helpful because the students, with this opportunity, they get the chance to work with city officials, to work with public works, work with downtown public arts. How do you coordinate that, how do you design it, how do you advertise it, how do you fund it, how do you fundraise? So it's a good learning experience, professional learning experience for them. Also, we're going to have an art show for the students during the weekend of Southwest Iowa Art Tour. We are not officially, the Community Canvas effort here is not officially part of the Southwest Iowa Art Tour, but Chris Olson-Harn is totally supporting the students' effort. So the students will have on the back end of their work, an art show displaying their process, their first draft, their second draft, their research, their final draft, and people can come and visit with them at the Brickwall Gallery on that weekend. So they get a professional art show that they will coordinate out of this effort as well. So the simplest way I can put it is, it keeps being a win-win-win-win-win effort. There hasn't been one downside to this yet. So I think, I think we're in good shape. Anything else?
Do you guys have any questions for us, or pieces that you want to hear more about? We want to go, just give you a little chance to have a chat, I know Jean's been keeping you in the loop.
The only question I have would be about the map itself, and do we need more road closed signs ahead? Just, I'm just thinking of traffic on Court Street coming downtown. They fly down Court Street, they fly up Market Street. Do we need another sign somewhere to stop traffic? It's just a safety concern in my eyes, but that's just a question I have.
Based upon speeds and not being on, you know, not say people don't speed, right? That this is a block in advance, so we put together a safety plan with the signage. So for example, coming up on Sixth Street from the south, you can see this first will be a road closed, this will be the corner of Sixth and Durant, road closed ahead. And then just beyond the alley, so all the alleys will be traversable in the downtown, and just beyond the alley there, it will be road closed with the full, like a type 3 barricade. So they couldn't go beyond that point. And then the yellow Xs then indicate where there'll also be traffic cones. Similar to some other downtown events, the entire square all four, so driving around the perimeter, the square will still be available. So you can see the angled cones here across from Hensite's building over to Leah Marie, angled cones from Saha over to Seeker Trinity. So the interior of the square will be traversable from Market and Court, which we've done for many other events. But cautioning with a closed ahead, and then before they leave the alley, which is another, just 175, 200 feet is where it will be the barricade.
And lots of social media blasts.
Yeah. Yeah, lots of social media blasts will be going out as well, I think to give people a heads up. Part of the fundraising effort is also letting people know this is happening, so they might see those donation boxes around downtown and other businesses. It starts queuing people in to that. The day of painting, the school's also going to be providing other adults that are just eyes up, and all the people down there will be in reflective clothing. So other just little signs that something is going on, and so we can kind of help give those visuals to the drivers who might be coming through that day.
And again, as the permit shows, the request is for 7:00 AM Monday to 7:00 AM Tuesday, to allow a full 24, at least here overnight.
Are there other ways to donate besides just drop boxes? Is there any?
Yep, if you, you can reach out, if you go, the Shelby County Wellness Alliance on Facebook, you can message us there. We also have, and I can hand this off to share around, the mailing address that people want to share that, maybe you can post that as well. We've been putting that out on Facebook as well, that can be sent to Janice Sorfenden, courtesy of the hospital, addressed, checks out to Shelby County Wellness Alliance. If people want to make electronic gifts via credit card or Venmo, they can reach out to me, and they can just message us on Facebook, or they can call me at Behavioral Health too, I'm there most of the time. So we are coordinating that kind of on a one-on-one basis, because it takes a little bit more logistics to do the electronic side, since we're kind of passing it through my tools and then bringing it back to the Wellness Alliance. But trying to make this as easy as possible for people to contribute, and helping people get to know, this is, again, this isn't just this one project, getting people excited about this idea of Community Canvas, that we're wanting to see it grow across Harlan, across Shelby County as well. And so part of that is generating excitement, like Brian was saying, we're going to do kind of a kickoff during the Southwest Iowa Art Tour. Hopefully, both the people who are coming in town for the art tour are getting to see the local work that's happening, but also get some of our local folks who maybe have never been down to the art tour doing that as well. We'll have a ribbon cutting that, that day as well, to sort of have a focal moment.
What was the date on that again?
That is the third weekend, right?
September 21, 22 is the Southwest Iowa Art Tour.
Similar to the tiny long weekend.
That will be the weekend that the students are in, in, you know, they'll have the art show at Brickwall Gallery. Brickwall Gallery Facebook page also has all the donation information. And I think Carol, I sent the information to Carol at Shelby County. She's, that, that information is also going to go out into the Did You Know coming up this week. So newspaper articles about the students, Erin Goddard will write, and we will probably do a press release of the papers.
So trying to get those pieces of information, it's been out on Shelby County information and ideas, so we're continuing to kind of keep that flowing in social media feeds, so hopefully people get a chance to find out about it. And then the other fun thing is, even if they hear nothing about it till it goes down, it's going to be very visible. And so letting people start to kind of get a feel for something unique about Harlan, and taking, again, as Brian was saying, taking that interest to kind of our downtown, helping them see that environment, and then as we start to see these crosswalks pop up across our community, across our county, kind of reaching people into different areas, and it could hopefully maybe be something that people come to town just to kind of do a tour of all of them as they build.
There's already, I've already heard some people from some of the other towns, Panama and others, it's like, hey, could, you know, Community Canvas maybe do something in Erling or Panama? It's like, we should. It's time and money, that's all.
Lot of room to grow. But I think one of the things that's been encouraging for us, both in last year's project, the theater mural, and kicking this one off as well, there's been a tremendous amount of local support, and we so appreciate the city, the time, the energy that Jean, or the Streets Department has invested in this as well. Just made the whole thing feel very encouraging. I think when you get volunteers together to try to do something, and then you have that support from our local government, it really just makes the whole thing go pretty smoothly, and it's been neat to kind of see it take shape here.
It's pretty cool.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it kind of goes back to, to the, go back to, people complain about parking, parking, parking downtown. It's great that we have to consider a traffic problem in downtown Harlan for a Monday morning, that, you know, we didn't have to worry about it. And I know we do, because there's just, there's lots of people that want to come downtown, you know, to do something, and that's a great problem to have. So I hope it's a traffic jam downtown that whole day, it'd be a great thing. It's a PR of that deal, so that's, thank you for what you guys have done. I know you're thanking us, but we do appreciate you guys put a lot of time into this. You know, it's just kind of the infancy, as far as I know, that project with the theater has been talked about a lot, that's very visible, and let people talk about that, and I'm sure this will get lots of comments too, so.
Most of, at this point, most of the downtown business owners know that this is happening and that there will be street closures, but they don't seem to be bothered by that.
Yeah, no, I think that's, I would think they would welcome the opportunity just to have some people having to go out of the way to get to them, so that's a good thing. Thanks again for coming tonight too, so.
Mayor, I'd like to also add, which is included on the information that was provided to you as well as we included in the actual permit that's issued, which we've discussed with the Wellness Alliance. And it might be top of mind for other folks, it's like, whoa, this stuff isn't going to last forever, then what? Well, in terms of minor touch-ups and freshen-ups, the intent is to have the students and/or the Feel Better Committee can support those. What if there's a public works improvement or public works project? Maybe some infrastructure under that, similar to other projects. If it needs to be torn up due to a public improvement, or we have water main issues, it'll be torn up, and then just poured back with concrete. It might look ugly for a while until it's determined. So we know those risks are there, yet we've talked through those, and again, those are risks you take to create a better place, I guess, in placemaking and the traffic community. But those are due exceptions.
Just to speak to that too, if anybody is wondering about those things. One of the things we're doing to help with longevity is making sure we're using products that are meant for pavement, and so that's a piece of it. But we're also sticking with really core colors. So the core colors of the color wheel, if you go back to your kindergarten color wheel, we're not doing kind of unique shading or things like that, it'll be block solid colors, and we'll have a supply of that paint, year to year to year, that stays consistent. So, you know, if there is, you know, a, maybe part of it needs to get torn up, or we just have wear and tear, we can go back and it's going to be the exact color, and we can match that and keep it looking really good.
That's the intent.
That's the intent.
We're going to learn a lot.
Nothing lasts forever, right?
All right. Moving on to city administrative. Motion, the.
Oh, motion, if you want to phone up.
Yeah, we're just public.
So excited, he's just ready to go.
First, and then second. So motion by Shaven, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Woo! Thank you all.
Thank you for your time and efforts, we appreciate it.
I'm just excited, because it is my front yard, so I'm thrilled, it's right next door, so.
How good evening.
See ya. All right, now we can move on to city administrative reports.
A host of items to update you on, again, we didn't have any lengthy list of action items, yet items that have been worked on or in the works, we'll update you on. We had a little bit of discussion before the meeting started, and I want to let those of you know who were here, or were at the last meeting, and I was en route and was on Zoom, so I apologize again if I made you seasick in the back of a vehicle traveling 70 miles an hour with my camera. So I'll learn from that myself, and probably just keep the camera off, but it's wonderful. What's that, Erin?
I didn't think it was that bad.
You weren't watching. But, you know, the, you know, business and entities carry on no matter time and place, so I do apologize for that. Just go through those updates. Airport commission meeting this morning, airport commission meets once a month. And the ALP, which is the Airport Layout Plan Project, is similar to a comprehensive plan, but it's specific to the airport facility. And the Terminal Area Drawing, which is a key item within an airport layout plan and draws a lot of attention, it's, it's the wish list, and they were talking this morning, it's like back in the old days, you're getting out the J.C. Penney or Sears catalog, and I want this for Christmas, but it's intended to be, what's the ultimate 15, 20, 30-year look? That, you know, taking money and funds off the board. Yet that, there's been a lot of planning to get to that Terminal Area Drawing. They're making some final tweaks to that, and be looking to approve that Terminal Area Drawing at the next meeting, which is one component of many components in this ALP. Why I'm alluding to that is, the next two projects that we, do we have some local match through our 10 accounts that we've been funding? The first one is, the two main projects out there first is to do some apron expansion with the intent to get in the above-ground fuel facility. The underground fuel facilities are very outdated, at least within the airport operations and the GA airport. So stage one is to get apron expansion, likely it's going to be to the south, and they then take our underground fuel facilities, which is in our CIP, to then get those above ground. Getting this Terminal Area Drawing as well as the ALP complete might allow us even to get a project in for this next fiscal year. So you might be seeing some items on that come September, October. A lot of good stuff happening at our airport. Fire department, I wasn't able to attend the meeting last night, yet Chief Beeson updated me, Erin, I believe you were there, that, I don't know if it was actually passed by them, but consideration of adjusting the minimum age from 19 to 18. Did they act on that last night?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
They did. A lot of us were at Woodbine for.
Yeah, I know, there is a Woodbine, we missed some of the district issue as well, so. But that may be coming up, because any constitutional change, for years or decades, the minimum age in the fire department's been 18, excuse me, 19? And again, I don't know if it got passed last night, but any constitutional change has to be finally approved by the city council. The intent of that is, the national standard is more 18 at this time. And the intent also is to pave the way for a junior firefighter program, so that those that are, more robust junior firefighter programs, those that are turning age 18, might still be in school and stick in the area, could be a natural transition to boost our fire department numbers. So that's updated, something that might be coming before us, or before you. Our sewer lining contract with MUSE Life and Tool, we don't have those contracts back, so don't, next meeting you might be acting on those. We are continuing to work with HMU in IT support. I've spoken to this a few times, kept you updated. And we have seen a first draft from HMU, sat down with Jenny and, yes, Joe and Jenny and Brian Doachler here a week ago, we're making some updates to that first draft. Yet I think that's, we see that's going to be a nice solution to our long-term IT needs and supported by another public entity, so we're working through that agreement. And that will likely have a PNF meeting, Personnel and Finance meeting, to review and discuss that. Another item that would, we're going to recommend come that Personnel and Finance meeting will be, just a minor item, consideration of adjusting our travel policy for meal allowances. You know, it's been a few years since we've adjusted the breakfast and lunch items, so just a small adjustment there based upon current travel expenses. We don't do a tremendous amount of travel, yet based upon some recent experiences, it makes sense to adjust those, and we'll review those at that meeting. Next week, there is a Planning and Zoning Commission, and that's to consider a request to vacate some property on North Seventh Street. That's north of Dice Street, just north of the Seventh Street Bridge that was newly constructed. And by statute, by ordinance, any of those requests to vacate, get directed to planning and zoning before they would be coming back to council. You'll receive a copy of that meeting packet, the notice went in the paper last, the notice just appeared yesterday or Friday in the paper, which the public notices requires, as well as letters to any adjoining property owners. The welcome sign, and I'll say former welcome sign, I believe it got.
Did you take it down?
What's that? Well, I didn't ask for Councilperson Shaven for copyright on this photo, but he was the one who actually shared this with me. So the previous welcome sign is now removed, which was the intent all along. And the poles that are remaining, work with HMU on their digger-derrick truck to get those poles removed, yet those poles are standing. And the intent was to reap, to use in a stockpile for other projects, either with some of the, a lot of it was, it was all framed up with two-by-sixes and two-by-fours. As they started, or as they were taking them off, quite a few of those were glued additionally to, they tin. to the tin to provide additional rigidity or more rigid. So some of that is going to go to literally the landfill, some of the, some of that we can actually repurpose maybe for some other projects or wood, some of the wood's still in decent, some usable condition for, but some of that is where the glue and the, so that will be scrapped. In the process of doing this, the question that gets asked many times, well, how old is that, or how old was that sign? We can say past tense now. So through a little bit of research, this isn't meant to be a full show and tell, but it is kind of interesting. So the location of that sign was written, it was 1987, this is from our wonderful newspaper archives and you can find this stuff in a couple clicks. So in 1987 is when the original sign went up. And in 1987, it was the City of Four Seasons. Right? Some of you may have remembered that. So here's the newspaper on that. And then a few years later, it blew down. So then in 1991, these is when the Chamber and City and other economic development folks and they felt that the City of Four Seasons was no longer appropriate. And this Harlan, a growing tradition, which you can see the emblem here, is what ended up being on the sign. And that meeting was in September of 91, and then in October 91, the new sign that we just removed was installed. So 33, 34 years old.
It's getting up there. How come it took them one month?
Thought you might find.
How come it took them one month?
Sign's already there. You know, whatever year the sign's been, 87.
Regulation.
It's a re-image in 91. A couple of other updates. The CGI Community Video Tour has been finished a number of weeks now, just haven't had an opportunity to showcase that. Once again, we've had this partnership with CGI going on nine years now. And thanks again to the hospital, to Chamber and Industry and Todd and the school for working collaboratively to get these sections updated. And it's a refresh, some of the previous video stock and pictures were used, but quite a lot of refresh. So if you go to the City of Harlan website homepage, it's the Welcome to Harlan Video Tour, and anyone can link to this. And these are the business and nonprofit sponsors at Circle or Outline. And then there's a welcome portion, economic development, education, quality of life and healthcare. They range anywhere from 70 to 90 to 100 seconds. And it wouldn't be appropriate to not at least share the welcome from.
Welcome to Harlan, Iowa. I'm Jay Christensen, mayor of this incredible community I'm delighted to call home. Harlan is a progressive community with big opportunities. From the city's historic downtown to its excellent schools, healthcare facilities, scenic parks and low cost of living, there's something for every age and background. Whether you're a parent raising a family, a business owner hoping to start or grow your own company, or a retiree looking to relax, Harlan offers first-rate amenities and resources to help you achieve your goals. While we cherish our strong sense of community, our Western Iowa location allows residents easy access to cultural, sporting and entertainment opportunities offered by larger metropolitan areas. We hope you learn more in the videos that follow, discover why Harlan is the ideal place to call home.
That's one take for your press.
Yeah, those three hours.
We're signing autographs following the meeting for those that wanted to stick around for.
He's up each clip.
Can't reveal appearance there yet. Again, encourage everyone, I know Todd's office and that sure points a lot of folks to this. And I haven't recalled the last stats, I could get those again, but it is frequently visited and more formed, those, I'd be looking at Harlan or as they Google and they can get to this, it's top rate and it gives a great, great impression. So nice to have those refreshed and updated after four years. And the last, two last items I have are, you know, this, this summer it been, we're blessed with a lot of community activities and our community, any groups at least that I'm, I have the ability to work with are, they're all wanting to put their best foot forward, be it from, you know, the county fair to the Roar in Harland Bike Nights. And just over the past week, it really came to my mind that Friday, Thursday night was the Roar in Harland with classic cars and motorcycles and kids' night. Friday night was a movie in the park that hadn't taken place since pre-COVID. And really blessed with those level of activities. And they're going on all the time, on all the time. Yet just seeing a few of those back-to-back and it's really exciting to be part of a community that, which I, you're all members of too, that between the time, talent, energy, services that it takes to pull those things off. And I did, and there it was. Just one last show and tell. It was much more than just a movie on Friday night and the intent is to have these more often. The Harlan Community Library Book Bike was there, there were free, free adult books, free kids' big books and the two ladies there were busy quite a bit of the evenings before the event started. Tropical Snow was there. I don't know that that line was less than 10, 10 deep, once things got going all the way up into movie time. Boy Scouts were there with some of their demonstrations with rain shooting. What a great young organization for, this was just getting the screen set up and the hillside just starting to fill in. This is still quite some time before the movie. And that is the new screen. And again, it took a lot of volunteer effort, there were some donations, and specifically I want to appreciate Fitz Chiropractic and Dr. Pitts, as he did provide funding for acquiring a city-owned screen, a city-owned projector, and additional expense for the rights to this first movie. So I really appreciate that tremendous effort. And so this equipment now is in our possession, so Parks Committee, this was primarily driven, this event was by the Dream Playground Committee, good support from Parks Committee. Wonderful event, and I have to admit that I quite enjoyed the movie migration myself. So I found myself sitting down and relaxing for a good, a better part of the movie. And the second meeting of the month, want to recognize our anniversaries, we have quite a few this month, takes a great team that we all work together in delivering our services. Roger Beeson, 22 years on August 5th. Nate Nelson in our Wastewater Department, two years on August 8th. Basil Sharing in the Library Department, two years on August 15th. Ashley Slice, City Clerk Finance Director, 13 years from August 18th of 2011. And Jack Goobles in our Code Enforcement and Inspections Divisions, three years on August 23rd. Madison Strachey left the library, so we had one person leave, Adult Services Librarian. That is an open position, actively recruiting for that at the library, it's 27 to 29 hours a week to run our adult services program. So if interested, check into the library and their website on that position. And one new hire to report, and actually started the end of July, and that was Josh Hack in the Wastewater Department as a mechanic operator. That's all I have for this evening, unless you have questions or comments for me.
All the stuff going on, kind of, and school starts?
Next Monday.
Monday. Next Monday. Don't have anybody going, but I'm, CDP folks are going to show up there next, sounds like Monday, so. I have nothing under my report, under my section. Shelby County Chamber of Commerce and Industry update, Todd Beline.
Good evening. Quick update on, during the last city council meeting, the first one of this month, I wasn't here because we did a national night out, that event went really, really well. The weather was perfect. I think if we would have had it the night before, we might have had 30 people show up when it felt like was 105 degrees out there. But we were estimating that we had 300, 350 people show up. We ran out of hot dogs in 20 minutes, so that's a, we're going to make sure that that's a problem next year. But we had lots of demonstrations going on, just discussion going on. We have representatives from the hospital, from all of our emergency management, and the fire department did a great job. They were cutting up a vehicle during the evening and, you know, letting people know what this is and why we would do this. So we had bounce houses, we have a lot of stuff going on. So like I said, it went, went well, already starting to talk about planning for next year. And when I talked to Alex this morning at the supervisors meeting, he said multiple departments throughout the county reached out to him and said, hey, next year, can we participate? So it'll probably be more of a Shelby County National Night Out than just a Harlan National Night Out moving forward. And that'll be great because DNR wants to come, there's a lot of different departments that want to come. And I'm hoping it gets big enough that we have to move it down to the fairgrounds, that'd be, that'd be awesome. So in addition to that, just a couple of things. On Friday, from 4 to 6, the agency is having an ambassador visit, open house. They'll be celebrating their 50th year of being a business in Harlan. So make sure you stop by for that. On Monday, there's going to be a blood drive from 8 to 2. So if you can donate, that'd be great. It's going to be held at the Owl Room at Mertu, but we're desperately in need of blood donation. So if you can make a donation, please do. There's going to be a wonderful family fun night this Thursday at the library. It's a Smoky Bear scavenger hunt, and it's, you know, of course, free to everyone. And there's also a hike night that night at a Prairie Rose, meet at Campsite 85 if you want to go for a hike. Should be a decent night, I don't think it's supposed to get too hot until the weekend. And then finally, Elmcrest on the 23rd, they're going to have a cookout from 3 to 6 on the backside of their building, free will donations for that cookout, and that money will be used for their Alzheimer's walk team. So go grab a hot dog and contribute to that. But other than that, the only other thing is a reminder that Thursday, September 12th, the second Thursday of September, we will have a business networking event at Milk and Honey. We have finger foods and beverages, but that's something we're going to do every month, the second Thursday of the month, starting at 5 o'clock with Milk and Honey. And it's open to all businesses, they don't have to be Chamber members to attend. So, and that's, that's it for the Chamber for tonight.
Thanks, Todd. Harlan Municipal Utilities update, Joe Rouschimer.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Joe.
Just a few items. Usual updates on our couple projects, we've got Golden Row Water Project update. All new, all the three new wells and all existing wells are now tied into our new mains, electrical and controls. McCarthy Trenching will set the roofs on new wells 33 and 34 tomorrow. So things are starting to get kind of wound down on some of that. Contractors will be working on punch list items that we came up with, as far as some items that they need to do, just to kind of clean things up. And then, and then I think as I mentioned before, new deep well number 35, still scheduled for start of construction probably in September. Like I mentioned there, hopefully that'll be up online before the end of the year. Our overhead underground electric project, or in subcontractorship, complete all underground work by mid-September is the hopes there. And then that will leave Burns Electric, who's the general contractor, left to continue to pull wire and set the electrical equipment. Our weekly meeting, they feel that they're ahead of schedule, I think they're moving right along as far as the project in hold. It will go into next year though, I mean, we're looking at some of the wire, we won't get until after the first of the year, just because of delays and perturbations. But with that finished up, I mean, hopefully by summer time next year, I think is, is when that's planned to be completed, that project. And then lastly, as usual, a reminder to the public on helping HMU by completing their lead service line surveys by going on their own. And then by going to our website under the Public Notice tab, just kind of walks them through that they can complete that on their own. Otherwise, as usual, we do have one employee going house to house on Wednesdays and additional employees on Saturdays. Will likely continue with the Saturdays through September. Roughly 600 surveys left or about 75% complete on the 2,400 services. We got to do this survey, so get closer. I guess any questions or comments?
It's the AP, we're checking on the UPADA deadline on, or?
October 16th. We got to have that all turned in, so.
They're around the corner.
Yeah, yeah, speaking of, it's a word, summer, all right. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Shelby County Sheriff's update.
We've had a pretty busy month. We sent the deputy down to Oklahoma for a training conference. He was sponsored by the Iowa Narcotics Officers Association, they sponsored him to go down there. We assisted Mills County with a shooting they had a couple weeks ago at the I-29 Speedway. Yeah, Deputy Red Coke is going to the academy on Monday, right? So excited? Losing people?
Excited.
Nervous?
No.
No.
Excited, ready to get out of it, so.
Or lose, ran to the academy, or you're going to lose RJ Dillenberger back to the schools. So he's a pretty busy body over there. He needs to earn his fair share of wages when he works there. Any questions, comments, concerns for us?
Good luck at the academy.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is that a 20-week or how long?
16.
16?
16.
Wow.
16 long weeks.
All right. Anybody, public have any comments? Comments from up here to my right?
Mr. Library's having their annual book sale, he's going on right now.
Oh, yes.
If you're in need of a book, go check them out.
Do you buy books?
You can buy them.
Can you donate books?
That's, that's an Amanda question. I think they've stopped taking them at this point.
Okay. Anything to my left? Give us some books, sounds nice.
Probably not.
September 3rd meeting, I'll be on Zoom, so I will be on your destination, so.
Okay, we have more than one bar, we're moving along. Wow. This is September 3rd.
I will email you guys also.
Okay. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Full house.